Welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. We're going to begin today's meeting as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silent prayer. Would ask that you remember the family of Claire Donnelly as we do this. The mayor in Mays passed away Saturday evening at the age of 82, so I ask you to keep his family in your prayers. Now please rise and join us for the saying of the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For agenda additions, do not have any additions, but I do want to ask the council that we do not take any action tonight on item M, which is the reappointment of Ben Wolburn. If we could skip over that this evening and not take action, I don't want to remove it. I just don't want to take action at this time on that. That is actually per his request. It's really doesn't sound like he had done something wrong, though he just said he doesn't think he can serve another two years at this time, so I want to hang tight on that. First thing to come before the council this evening is item six, the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the February 20th, 2018 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the appropriations, I'm sorry, consent agenda for the February 20th, 2018 council meeting.
Second? First and second, to approve the consent agenda as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving right along, discussions and approval of appropriations ordinance. The item A here is appropriation ordinance for 2018-05 is in the amounts of $194,289.15. Are there any questions on appropriations ordinance? Not just to let everybody know, this is mine to public as I do every once in a while. This is available all the time, every penny that is spent by the city. So if there's no questions, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 18-05 in the amount of $194,289.15.
Second? First and second, are there any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Do you have two proclamations this evening? Is there anybody here representing Flood Awareness Week or Severe Weather Awareness Seeing none, I will simply read them here from the bench. City Bel Air proclamation for Flood Awareness Week, March 5th through the 9th, to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas. Greetings. Whereas Flood Awareness Week is an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for and understanding flooding in Kansas and to encourage all citizens to better prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for the upcoming flood season. And whereas spring and summer flooding in 2013, 15, and 16 saw five flood deaths in the state of Kansas and widespread flooding across the state. And whereas the Kansas Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies flooding as the costliest type of natural disaster in Kansas in terms of lives lost, injuries, and property damage. And whereas floods threaten people, homes, and other property in every county in Kansas. Whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without warning. And whereas damage from a flood is not normally covered under a standard homeowner's policy. Whereas the spring will bring seasonal rainfall, which can bring the potential for flooding. And whereas National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Weather Service will initiate Severe Weather Awareness Week on March 6th. Therefore, I David Austin, Mayor, do hereby proclaim March 5th through 9th as Flood Awareness Week and call upon all citizens to recognize this observance. Set down the clerk, please. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas severe awareness, severe weather awareness week is March 4th through 10th, 2018. And whereas Kansas has experienced more federally declared disasters in recent years than any other state in the nation. And whereas each year brings the potential for violent weather to Kansas. And whereas large portions of our state, including the city of Bel Air, can be devastated by flooding, tornadoes, hail, windstorms, and other potentially dangerous events. Whereas the Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA, have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather and to educate themselves on safety strategies. And whereas Governor Jeff Collier has declared the week of March 4th through the 10th, 2018, as severe weather awareness week in Kansas. Therefore, in official recognition of this statewide event, I David Austin, Mayor for the city of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim March 4th through 10th, 2018, severe weather awareness week in Bel Air. Pass that down, please. So with that, we're going to move on to city requested appearances, which I realize I skipped over and I apologize for that because I went my notes, but first one is from Wichita State University is the presentation to our city engineer and public works director, Ann Stevens. And this is her mini-MPA certificate.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I want to thank you for supporting staff professional development. The Mini-MPA Professional Development Program has been in place for over 17 years with over 490 graduates. The sessions are taught by academic faculty from the Hugo Wall School and local practitioners. These attendees were dedicated to attending 16 sessions starting at 8:00 a.m. on Friday mornings. Really dedicated. We had eight sessions in the fall and eight sessions in the spring. If you look at the alumni for the Mini-MPA, you will see fire chiefs, under sheriffs, finance officers, and many other local government leaders. It's really great to look at what they accomplished since their time at the Mini-MPA, and we look forward to seeing what Ann will accomplish. This year's class had 31 participants with backgrounds that ranged from IT, fire, marketing, and finance to public works director. This group had a breadth of knowledge that brought together a lot of different perspectives and roles, which is one of the main reasons the Mini-MPA is such a successful program. These groups network and become colleagues they can count on through professional challenges. The topics covered were human resources, finance, strategic planning, and community engagement, as well as many others. This year, we had representatives from Harvey in Sedgwick County, along with the cities of Mays, McPherson, Bel Air, Derby, and Wichita. Additionally, we had other nonprofits. Again, we appreciate your long-term support of the program and your staff development, and we look forward to seeing great things continue to come from the city of Bel Air and Ann. So it gives me a great honor to present this to Ann. Thank you, Ann.
Morgan, thank you, and Ann, congratulations. Since we've already done proclamations, we'll get back on track with citizens' concerns. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council, they may do so at this time. Hearing none, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Prior to issuing, an IRB, a public hearing must be held to give citizens the opportunity to ask questions or voice concerns. So this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak on this topic to come to the podium. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to close, motion to approve the, wait a minute, where am I? Close public hearing.
Second? First and second, close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, now move on to reports. We'll start with council member Elsaf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have two things I'd like to report on. The first being, as a member of the board on the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, or the CCUA, I've attended three meetings now and I have learned some things. And these are just kind of some basic overview, and I just thought I'd share some highlights. Most of these came up in our meeting on February 22nd. And first of all, we certainly do a lot of preventive maintenance and testing that the CCUA does, the people there, the manager. They do an exceptional job of all that behind-the-scenes work that is required to get our water delivered to our houses and to keep our sewers working there. It's quite an eye-opening point of education for me to see all the ongoings there. So that has been interesting, and it's a side of the city that I think most people, including myself, don't typically become aware of or pay attention to, because every time we go to the faucet, flip on the handles, we get water. And so it's neat to kind of see what work is required to get that to happen. One interesting thing that came up at the past meeting is that the city of Kechai expressed interest in possibly getting water from the CCUA. That is something that is just currently in, the city is in discussions with the CCUA. There's been no decisions made or anything like that, but I just thought that was a point to just mention that we've been discussing. Also, in the past meeting, we discussed the emergency water supply plan that the CCUA has in place for both the city of Bel Air and Park City. So rest assured, there are plans in place, and these are plans that can be implemented should there be a drought or a natural disaster or some other type of disaster that affects our water supply. There are plans in place, and we're keeping those updated as time goes on. The manager, Randall, he wants to make sure that we get a little bit of education, that is us on the board. One of the things that he hit on this past meeting was the issue of water rights, and he gave an overview of the fact that there are water rights in the state of Kansas and how, just kind of a high view of how they're governed by the municipalities and the states. It was just, it was interesting, and it's good to get that education on something new. Just a couple of quick facts. We do have two water towers that are owned by the city of Bel Air, and the one water tower that is west of Woodlawn holds a half million gallons of water. The water tower that's on the east side of Woodlawn holds 1 million gallons of water. And there's a third tower that's painted with Bel Air's logo on it, but it is owned by the city of Wichita. Also, the CCUA was something that was kind of a mystery to me when I first found out about it. And there's one definition of what the CCUA is that I just find kind of interesting, because the CCUA is technically not a government entity, but it's not really a private entity. It's kind of a mixture of both. And in the water plan, the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority is defined as a quasi-municipal wholesaler that provides potable water and utility services but has no retail customers. So it only services Park City and Bel Air in the way that it's constructed. Those are just some things I just wanted to share with the council and with the citizens of Bel Air about the CCUA. And there's another topic I just wanted to mention, and that is, I had the chance this week to speak to Andy Padilla, who is an instructor at Thunderbird Firearms Academy. And I'm sure we all have recognized, as a country, our hearts have been heavy with the horrible tragedy that happened with the school shooting in Parkland, Florida in mid-February. And I came across the, it was actually, I came across on Facebook that the Thunderbirds Firearms Academy, which is located on North Greenwich Road, just north of 96, and this is, they are offering a class to any teacher, public or private school teacher, that has interest and can show their credentials. They're offering a class on May 19th of this year. It is an active shooter response training class for teachers. And he explained to me that it's an eight-hour class. It is completely free, so if you are a teacher and you're interested in getting education and that kind of thing. He gave me a brief overview of the class, and I'll simply share that it is part classroom instruction, and it is also part, they do some kind of scenarios and kind of some, they say it gets a little physical, they have some physical training. And I just wanted to share that for all the teachers that are in our community that may be interested in, maybe they don't know where to start, where to go to. But I just thought I'd mention that as something that our teachers in the city might like to be aware of. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to remember, you hadn't even joined the city council, and I said, hey, we need you on the CCUA. Glad to know. That's Member Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report.
Member Martine?
No report.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment, I was glad to see the speed limit sign, mobile sign on Rock Road this evening, clocked me at 44 miles an hour, which was excellent.
That's what we're hoping.
Glad to see that's operational.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
I have no formal report this evening as well, except for, well, let everybody, remind everybody that coming up is our spring festival, the Easter egg hunt, and I know there's lots of preparations for that, so I hope everybody can join us for that. With that, move on to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that the legislative session is in full swing in Topeka, and the deadline for proposing new bills through committees has passed. And typically, we would propose our bill to the League of Municipalities, and then our advocate there would propose to a committee. So that period for the 2018 session has passed. Currently, there are committees are reviewing and debating bills. There are a whole slew of bills right now. Some of the bills impacting municipalities include tax bills, law enforcement procedure bills, and some bills even impacting city administration. And council members and the public can go to the League of Municipalities website and go to their legislative tracker and learn a little bit about the bills. But I would tell you, at this point, with so many bills in the queue, it can be overwhelming because there's so many of them. I am tracking them. Currently, I'm working with the League to kind of understand some of the bills that would possibly impact us a little bit better and to sometimes weigh in on our past experiences with some of them. And I'm happy to talk to any council member or work with you if you have any feedback on any of the present bills. Like I said, right now, there's, bills are still in committee. At the end of March, we'll have a clearer picture, the bills that survive committee and start going to, like if they started in the Senate or the House, they'll start crossing over and going to the other section. And that will tell us a little bit more about the bills that will actually rise to the top and start to crystallize exactly what bills will impact the cities in the next year or so. And that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Mayor?
Good, Mayor. Just a couple items. I'd like to let the council know that the city received our 2017 Tree City USA designation, and this comes from the Arbor Day Foundation, and this would be 22 years in a row that we've had that, that being a Tree City USA. And I'd like to thank our Parks Division, they're very active in maintaining our parks and trees and such, and then we also have a very active Tree Board. In fact, one of the appointments tonight is the Tree Board President, and they're very active. And I'd like to thank them as well for their work, and because the two of them, the city Parks Division and the Tree Board working together, there's a lot of requirements that we have to meet, and they really help us with that. So that's a positive thing, we've been able to maintain that for 22 years now. Another great thing, the Rec Center received a $2,000 grant from Dick's Sporting Goods, and they'll use that for buying the equipment and such for their programs out there. We've also talked to them about possibly being a year-round sponsor, and, you know, maybe displaying some of their advertising and such for, you know, a fee or equipment or something, so that's kind of an ongoing talk. But we did receive the $2,000 grant from them, I think it was last week, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic. Move on to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions for the council this evening. We're going to look at first at our council workshop policy, but we also have an IRB, appointments, and reappointments. Just mentioned, there's a change order and a user agreement, all on the agenda for this evening. So with that, we're going to start with consideration of the Bel Air City Council Workshop Policy. And I want to let everybody know, we had a, what, a three, three-and-a-half-hour-long workshop a couple Thursdays ago and talked about many different topics, and it was great having us all together and be able to really talk through a lot of items that, some that are on the agenda this evening, some that'll be on the agenda in the near future. One of those items was the council workshop policy. The council maintains a policy on how those workshops are run. Our governing body here, we reviewed the current policy, again, like I said, our February 22nd workshop, wanted to make a very small change. Our city attorney incorporated that change in the policy, which is now before council for final approval. Want to see if there are any questions of the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I just have one comment or perhaps suggestion for the council workshop policy. The section that we amended was on the public input to state that after an agenda item, the mayor might recognize someone from the audience, if the mayor deems it would assist us in the progression of the discussion. But preceding that, we have a statement that says that citizen comments are not generally taken at workshop meetings, and I might propose that we remove that statement from the council workshop policy. I think that's not necessarily in the spirit of what we were kind of discussing during the workshop, so it's a suggestion or thought I had that you'd be interested in. What has gone on since?
You know, with that, I'm, I mean, it's your guys' policy, that is kind of been a thing where we don't open it up to a lot of public discussion, but simply, you know, how we added it in there so that if there's someone who attends a workshop, which is extremely rare, but certainly we want to encourage all the citizen input that we can get. So I understand completely what you're saying, and the way I read that is then afterwards, if we go over a topic and we see someone who's in the audience, we can ask if they would like to ask a question at that time. But as far as remove, do we want to remove that line that says general comments or not?
I think it's a good suggestion, and I think it helps open up transparency and makes the policy look more transparent.
Yeah, I think the issue is the perception of it being contradictory. I think, yeah, I think, I think removing that is okay.
I don't know if it changes it a whole.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, I think we still have a good workshop, and I think we just allow citizen input if it's being necessary at that time, so.
I agree, Mayor, because we have a hard time getting people. We want them to come forward, and even if it's at a workshop, if there's an item on there, they should be able to discuss that too. And like the last workshop, we had, what, four or five people showed up? I was shocked. We've never had that many workshops before. And it was great that they came, even though some of them didn't live in Bel Air, but they were concerned about the roads and et cetera. So I would agree with removing that. And then if need be, we could have them fill out cards if they came to the workshop like they did at the council meeting to speak.
Yeah, I really like the policy change that suggests that after each topic, the mayor can recognize people from the audience, and I think what we were looking for there was more participation and more public input if people come to the workshops, and so that first statement just didn't make sense to me.
That's right. I agree.
Yeah, I think what Councilmember Smith is suggesting, suggesting to make sense, so it sounds like there's a consensus up here, so we would need a motion to accept the policy with the addition of deleting, what was the specific one?
Yeah, with removing the citizen comments are not generally taken at workshop meetings, so if we remove that first sentence that just began with the mayor may recognize or ask for citizen input.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
A second?
A second.
Does that work, city attorney?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item B is what Mahini, approving the IRB. The first action when issuing the IRB is for council to approve a letter of intent which spells out the requirements of the business, as well as any tax abatements that may be offered. That letter of intent was approved at our January 16th city council meeting. So the next step is, that starts the financing phase, is for a resolution of intent be approved by the city council. See, Kevin Cowan is here from Gilmore Bell, he can explain the resolution and answer any questions. We're going through all the formal elements here.
Sure. And Mr. Mayor, you always do a great job of setting me up here, so I probably will repeat some of what you have said, but this is the next step in the formal process. Under our state law, before the governing body can consider any sort of property tax abatement, they have to give notice of a public hearing, hold the public hearing, which we did tonight, have a cost-benefit analysis generated, which Wichita State has done. The cost-benefit analysis doesn't have to show anything in particular, I don't know if you've looked at that, but all four of the taxing subdivisions show a positive cost-benefit ratio, and that's a good thing. So we have those things present, and so you can consider an intent resolution and include in that the approval of the property tax abatement, which is a large part of what the intent resolution does. From this point forward, we really sit and wait for the company to sort of put their deal together with their lender. And Mr. Lasher, I don't know if you have any idea how quickly they're going to move. We talked about it today, we haven't heard anything from the company in terms of timing just yet, but sometimes those things will move fairly quickly after we've accomplished this step. So that's what this does. You may have also noticed in the resolution, there's a reference to a sales tax exemption, and those are the two big benefits available on this sort of project by the city issuing their industrial revenue bonds, the property tax abatements available, and then there's a state sales tax exemption available for all of the project costs paid for from bond proceeds. And again, those are the two primary incentives. Occasionally, there will be a project that can benefit from tax-exempt interest, federally tax-exempt interest, and this is not one of those projects. So those are the two big state law incentives.
Any other questions? They say then we pass this, and they can start working on construction and working with the bank?
Yeah, and I think that's what will happen, and some of you have been through this before. Sometimes the closing at the end will happen fairly quickly, but again, don't have a good feel for what the timing is just yet.
Well, appreciate you being here as always and explaining this. And anytime we're working with companies that want to build their business in Bel Air, we like seeing you here, and we like going through these, these steps.
You too. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Any other questions? This is time to ask the expert, because once he leaves, all bets are off by our hands when it comes to IRBs.
I guess I have a question. What is the, what is the general trend that you see in terms of the tax abatements across the country? It, it seems, my perception has been that's becoming more, more, they're more prominent or they're becoming more of a way of doing business? Is that, is that something that you would say?
And we can really only speak to Kansas, but, but if you read any sort of trade publications, economic development, or, then I would agree. It's, things are very competitive and, and different communities, not only across the state of Kansas, but other states have incentives that they can offer, and people, it seems, more and more understand that those incentives are out there, and they know what to look for and what to ask for. So yeah, I, I don't think this is becoming any less prevalent. I would add, and some of you may have noticed this, we're talking about a property tax abatement. In this case, it's, it's first year, what the letter of intent has, first year is 100% abatement, and then there's a payment in lieu of taxes thereafter. So what it, what it works out to be is there's 100% abatement, 80%, or is it 10 years, or 10% each year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's 100%, 90%, 80%, 70%. Prior to, a year ago, that covered all of the state and local government taxes, and the state legislature acted last year to protect one of the school finance levies. And it's, it's an eight mil levy or a maximum of eight mil levy. So it's, it used to be 100, it says 100% property tax abatements, 100% except for the, the school finance levy. Wouldn't surprise me if, if in the future, there's more of those adjustments, sort of one direction or the other, in terms of that incentive that can be offered. But, but again, to answer your question directly, it's, yeah, it is pretty common. We have offices in four different states, five different states now. And it's, the, the economic development side of things, you're dealing with these sorts of incentives. In a different states, you can offer these abatements or these exemptions through the issuance of bonds or maybe another methodology, but it, it is pretty common.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution of the governing body of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, determining advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in said city, and authorize executive, the execution of related documents, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Thank you much. Item C and D pertain to the Rock Spring change orders. The developer of Rock Springs initially was going to have each builder install their portion of the sidewalk when their house was complete. However, we run into a little bit of a problem where some of the builders were late getting them the sidewalks, and in other times where no construction occurred, had empty lots with no sidewalks. So as a result, the developer decided to install the sidewalks when the streets are being installed. This is an added cost for the street work that was not included in the bid, the original bid, and the reason for the change orders. The costs of the sidewalks are included in special assessments for those properties that benefit. And is here, our new mini MPA, Anne Stevens, is here to answer any questions or talk a little bit more about that.
Just to make sure everybody is aware, there were petitions originally signed for the sidewalks on the project. It was just a question of how and by whom they were going to be constructed. The city was always planning to pay for the construction of the sidewalk. It just was not clear ahead of time whether that would be perform, whether sidewalk would be installed as the individual homes were being built or all at once ahead of time. There's pluses and minuses to both methods, whether the homeowner or the builders do it or the city does it with the construction of the streets. The developer did ask that we go ahead and put them in ahead of time because he was having too much of a headache trying to get the builders to put them in as the homes were going up. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kind of makes sense to do it all at one time.
Yes.
With that, just my commentary there. And we do have two agenda items here. The first one pertains to Phase 1 and 2, and the second one is for Phase 5, which is why it's the same action item, but two different motions will need to be made here.
Just one question, I guess, is there, is there any disadvantage to the city in doing this earlier than we had originally planned? Can you think of any disadvantages there?
No, the costs are still spread as special assessments to each individual property. So there's, the only, the only difference is if there's a cost difference, it's not saving the city any money or costing the city any extra. It's getting spread as specials to those individual lots.
It's the same price, whether we do it now or later?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe a different price, but it's still getting spread to the lots.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One question I have is, are you or the engineers going to be watching over this so that once these sidewalks are put in, then if it happens to get broken, who's liable for that?
The, we have a contract with Garver to perform the construction observation when the sidewalks are going in initially. Between myself and Keith, our building inspector, we will work on keeping watch over these sidewalks because that is a common issue. As the homes are being constructed, sidewalks do get broken. It will be the responsibility of the builder to pay for and repair those sidewalks to the city of Bel Air specifications.
Somebody will be watching over this?
Yes, myself and Keith.
Is that part of the, the Garver contract, or they're doing the inspections?
They will be doing the inspections for the initial sidewalk. It is an addendum to their contract. There was a $2,000 fee for Phase 1 and 2 of Rock Springs 2nd, and a $1,000 additional fee for Phase 5 of Rock Springs.
So after a, a home is built, they would go back and relook at the sidewalk, make sure we don't have a broken sidewalk at that point?
No, no, they will be looking at the initial construction.
Looking at initial construction.
Between myself and Keith, we will be following it through the home's construction.
Okay.
Especially Keith, he's out there quite a bit with doing his different inspections on the, on the property.
Okay.
It will, I would imagine it would be required, as a requirement of the certificate of occupancy to make sure that sidewalk is fixed.
Good.
But yeah, we will not let the builders get away with not fixing those.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Would entertain a motion.
Is it appropriate to combine these into one motion, or do they have to be separate?
Maybe have to be two separate ones.
Two for separate?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the change order in Phase 1 and 2 of Rock Springs 2nd for sidewalks in the amount of $47,012, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve the change order in Phase 5 of Rock Springs for sidewalks in the amount of $26,390.20, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Along as item E is consideration of a resolution concerning service license and permit fees within the corporate limits of our city. Each year, our staff reviews all of the fees assessed by the city for various services. If staff feels that adjustments should be made, they bring those to the governing body for discussion. At the February 22 workshop, which we mentioned earlier today, the council discussed the suggested fee change only to the recreation department, and those changes are included in the fee scheduled, which is, which is adopted by a resolution.
Are you entertaining a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I am. Go for it.
I motion to approve a resolution concerning service license and permit fees within the corporate limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments?
One question. I think during the workshop, we talked about the addition of a combined recreation and pool membership. I was just looking through the, the version that I downloaded of that fees, and I didn't see, I'm not sure if I'm missing it or...
The way that I understood that, that was to be more of a, like a sale special that we were going to do, because we're only going to do it for a limited time, if I remember correctly. So it would not, the, the two fees, the two individual memberships would still be in the fees, but yeah, we will run a sale or a sale combining, making a couple of packages.
And we don't need a separate line item for that in this fee schedule to approve?
What they do is they, they prorate that. So at the beginning of the year, it may be, I think he talked about like an extra $35, and then after a month, somebody wants to add that, then it would be, you know, 25 or whatever. So it kind of goes down as the summer goes through if they don't want to have the full summer pool session.
But as far as a, a line item in our fee schedule for the sale price or, or authorizing a sale, is that something that we need to have listed for that discount?
You don't have to. I'm thinking that would be based on being a member of an HOA. Is that what you're talking about, where members of HOAs get a prorated? No?
No.
We have talked about taking a individual pool membership or a family pool membership and packaging it with an individual rec center membership and a rec center for a family or individual. Basically, we wanted to come up with a discount where if you bought both of them, you've saved X amount of dollars. I don't know that we set that amount, but we wanted to kind of try packaging, you know, marketing a couple of those packages at a discount, an idea of, you know, to stimulate. I mean, they're already, I think, heck of a deal individually in family memberships, but if we get families to buy a package, maybe there's people that would go ahead and spend a few extra dollars to get the second membership and use our facilities. And so I think what Councilmember Smith was asking is an excellent question, because we want to do that, but yeah, how do we do that? Because we set the fees and then discount.
Yeah, Brian came back and said that he came up with a, I thought it was an extra $35 or something like that, to, to have a, you know, the special rate of both.
Because I think the idea was, if, if you buy the pool membership, then you can get a discount on the rec center membership to encourage more usage there. I think we made a recommendation as to what that combined fee might be.
Yep.
But I don't think we were trying to necessarily specify exactly what it was. I was just looking to see on here if we had anything that called that out, or I wanted to make sure there's nothing that we need to do as council to authorize that to happen because I think that the community can really benefit from that.
Well, and I definitely think that, that can be an all-year deal and not just a sale, because if you come up to the summer months where somebody's talking about joining the pool, but then you say, hey, for this, you can do the rec center too, and if it lasts for a year, we don't need to prorate anything, it's just your yearly membership.
Right.
So I mean, I think if, that should be an all-year round deal. I mean, if they, you know, want to join the, the rec center in the winter, say, hey, you can do this and have the pool included in the summer when it's open, so.
Yeah, we'll want to amend our fee schedule to include that, so I'll work with Brian to propose a new resolution that includes that in here.
With that being said, do we need to hang tight on approving this, or can we go ahead and approve it tonight with the understanding that there'd be an amendment or?
The nice thing about the way our code is written as to this fee schedule is you can update it as many times as you want. So if you're comfortable with approving this one tonight, we can come back and bring another one and update it then, or if you'd rather wait and do it all at one time, you can table it and we can address it.
I'd prefer to just table it, Mayor.
I think Brian would prefer to go ahead and pass it, and the reason being is that they're getting ready to start with their ball programs, and so that's why he was kind of wanted to get it, because there are some adjustments in, in the softball and baseball. And I think they're going to start signing up for those. So if, that would, that way he could work on getting the X, the added cost savings for a membership, and then we can bring that to you at the next council meeting.
So basically, it would be council approves the fee at tonight's meeting, and then at our next meeting, we offer a sale.
Yep, we'll add on the, yeah, but that way the other things...
Yeah, approve it again. Approve the entire.
Yeah.
But this way, nothing's delayed between now and our next meeting.
And so the next one will just be that one change for the...
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I motion to approve a resolution concerning service license and permit fees.
Actually, I'm going to interrupt you because we already have a first and second.
Oh, my bad. Oh, I forgot.
No problem.
I forgot, sorry.
We're just awaiting the vote.
My bad, my bad.
I appreciate your enthusiasm with that, but yeah, Councilmember Elsaf made the motion, and Councilmember Benage made the second. Are there any other questions or comments on this?
I just want to say that I agree that doing an amendment at a future council meeting for adding that in is a, is a great idea. Let's, let's do it.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to add that, Mayor, the amendment in there?
Not at this time, because we don't have an amendment to add.
Yeah, we need, we need to set the dollar amount, and then we need to set, I guess, it'll just be implemented with the amendment.
So it'll come back to us at our next meeting with the combos.
The combo, right.
And we'll make sure to point that out the next one. Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now moving on to item F, which are, these are a lot of appointments and reappointments. The first one is reappointment of Dan Broyles to the Utility Advisory Committee. His term would expire in August of 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dan Broyles to the Utility Advisory Committee.
A second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, moving right along, is consideration of my appointment, reappointment of Bill Moss to the Bel Air Utility Advisory Committee. His term would run as well through August of 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Bill Moss to the Utility Advisory Committee.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item M is consideration of reappointment of Art Tenbrink to the Utility Advisory Committee. Term, that term also will expire in August of 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Art Tenbrink to the Utility Advisory Committee.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item I is my reappointment of Gary Northwall, president of the Bel Air Tree Board, to the Bel Air Tree Board. This would run through February of 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Gary Northwall to the Tree Board.
A second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, these are individuals who have given, have shown interest in joining this committee, the Community Development Advisory Committees. You know, we had a couple of members elected here, so had a couple of openings on that, and they've all filled out the volunteer sheet. The first one is the appointment of Jeanette Clement to the Community Development Advisory Committee. That term run through March of 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jeanette Clement to the Bel Air Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Next is Denetria Nelson to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Denetria Nelson. Mr. Mayor, I motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Denitria Nelson to the Bel Air City Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Next is appointment of Carrie Kepley to the Community Development Advisory Committee. This term would run through March of 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Carrie Kepley to the Bel Air Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Same sign. I ask that we do not take any action on item M. Do we need to officially table that, say the attorney, or do we just?
It would be best practices to table it.
Okay. I would ask that motion be made to table.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I motion to table the mayor's reappointment of Ben Welburn to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Alrighty. And do want to let the public know, we kind of just went through a bunch of those committee appointments, and it's great that we have so many volunteers and so many people who are interested in serving. We have a tree board, we have our utility advisory committee, we have our community development committee, and we have our planning commission too, which are all made up of volunteers here in this area. And if anybody out there has an interest in being on any of these committees, which I think most of them are pretty full at this point, but we do have some openings on a couple of them, and some coming up later on. So by all means, let City Hall know for that, or let the committee know, and love to have you all. All of our meetings are always open to the public, and so anyone's welcome to attend those. I do appreciate council's approval of those committees. Next, final item for council this evening is the Sunrise Christian Academy Field Use Agreement. Again, something that we discussed at length at our February 22 workshop. Sunrise Christian Academy and the Rec Center have worked together since the Rec Center was built back in 1996. Sunrise does not have baseball or softball fields, so they use our rec fields for their practice and games. In return, Sunrise allows rec use of their parking lots and their brush pile, and, again, they're using our fields when they are not being used by other teams. So they're actually not in use, and the Rec Center League has not opened at that point when they're in use. So this is all before that time. This agreement outlines the requirements for each party to utilize the fields. The agreement was discussed, like I said, at our February 22 workshop, and changes have been incorporated. See if there's any questions for, should the attorney, or should you guys like to proceed?
I do have a question, and it's not a big issue to me, but the workshop stated to make the agreement where it could be voided by either party with a 30-day notice, and the way this reads is only at anniversary, a 30-day notice to anniversary. But, and maybe I wasn't real clear at the workshop when we talked about this, but I always thought we would make that at any time, if that could be avoided. I'm hoping we never come to those times, but, you know, that's why you make agreements.
It is, it's written in a way, I can see why you think that it can only be terminated within 30 days of renewal, but it's actually written in a way where termination has to be done 30 days prior to renewal. So we're not in a situation where we have it on council's agenda, and we have a termination letter in the queue, and it's renewed or terminated. So it's actually, it's written in such a way that you can return, you can terminate any time up into 30 days prior to renewal. After that period, it will automatically renew, and then after that, you can terminate a week later. But just closes that window so there's no crossing of wires in the paper trail. I can make that more clear, because I see what you're saying, how that might lead someone to think that the only time you can turn it, terminate is 30 days prior to renewal.
That's the way I read it, but okay, I understand what you're saying, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Entertaining a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the outdoor recreation facility use agreement with Sunrise Christian Academy as presented, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Same sign. Next, for future issues, wanted to see if council wants to have another workshop on Tuesday, March 13. I know we mentioned that our last one, you know, some things we might want to talk about. We talked about the Park Master Plan, how we want to move forward on that, if there's some other policies we want to take a look at, or if there's, you know, someone had mentioned looking at goals of the council. So those are certainly things we can talk about, or if there's anything else you'd like to talk about, or we can simply wait and have a workshop in April as well, too, if you want. So this is the point that may need where council will need to decide if we're going to have a workshop and what will be on that agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think we should have a workshop. Something specifically that's on my mind that I think might be good for council to review is our policy on conditional ordinances and business licenses. I know we had an issue before council on February 6, where we approved a conditional use ordinance for a resident on North Batten, and that kind of highlighted to me that that process is really intense, and I'm just wondering if there might be some opportunities to review that, and I'd be interested in what the rest of council thinks on if that's the right process for Bel Air, or if we can do something to make that a bit less burdensome for people.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to talk about. One thing that I noted is that in this council packet were the deliberations of the different boards for issues that we'd already approved as motions, and I thought, well, it would be nice to have those ahead of time. I know sometimes that's, you know, the way things just fall in place, but, yeah.
Okay, so we can talk about business licenses and conditional use permits?
Yeah, I definitely would like to add the master park plan into the discussion. I think, you know, that's a big opportunity, as we talked about at the last, actually, workshop with Mr. Moran and Mr. Jones, so.
Maybe we can pull a couple of policies to review and see if there's...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
When do we start working on the budget?
Probably start that in, what, April?
Probably May.
April, May, okay.
We'll start meeting with the department heads and such in the next couple of months, and have something ready by the May workshop for you. And then we'll probably go into June and July with those as well.
Because we have to have it done in August, right?
Yep.
Fifteen?
Right.
Okay. So we will have a workshop on a week from today at 6:30. Does that time and date still work for everybody?
Yep.
Discuss business licenses and conditional use permits, as well as the Park Master Plan, and we'll ask our city manager and city attorney to pull two or three policies we can take a quick review of. I like that, that's a good practice to review those on an ongoing basis. I have no need for an executive session. Anybody else? Not? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Sign. We are adjourned at 7:15.